Okay, this is May 16th, 2018. Meeting of the Oyster River Cooperative School Board will come to order. The first order of business is the approval of the agenda. Could I have a motion to approve the agenda? Denise?
I motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Moved by Denise is her second. Second by Brian. Changes? Hearing none. All in favor, please raise your hand. Seven in favor, the student rep in favor. The agenda is approved. I move to public comment. Anyone? Three minutes. Going? Going? Gone? Okay. Motion to approve the minutes from the May 2nd meeting. Could I have a motion to approve those minutes? Brian?
Motion to approve May 2nd meeting.
Moved by Brian is her second. Second by Al. Are there changes to those? Denise?
So, this is actually, it's the correction, it's a correction for the corrections. It's under the motion to approve the April 18th regular meeting minutes. And underneath the page seven, the last paragraph, removing, we wanted to remove who was in favor of removing this exception, but I thought we also wanted to remove the people who were, like, not in favor. Oh, on page, let me tell you what page it is. It would be helpful.
So, we talk about this?
This is page two. So, what it is, is you made a suggestion to revision to change the last paragraph for the April 18th regular meeting minutes. But I think part of what you were indicating is, it's right here, page seven, last paragraph removed, Michael Kenny and Brian are in favor. But I think we also wanted to remove who the people were who were, like, not in favor.
I don't know if that was in the minutes.
Oh, you don't think they, okay.
Yeah.
They weren't in the original minutes? I thought they were.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, we're all set?
Yeah, I think we're okay with that.
The original minutes did say that Tom, Denise, and Alec, the exceptions should be there.
Yeah. I think everybody's name was included in the regular minutes. And we didn't want, we didn't want to say who was, like, in favor and who wasn't in favor at that point because it wasn't a vote.
Because there was no vote.
Right. Right.
Okay.
Right.
Yeah. Okay. Thanks Denise. Other changes? Hearing none. With that change, all of us in favor, please raise your hand. Seven in favor, the student rep in favor. The minutes are approved. We need to motion to approve the non-public meeting minutes for May 2nd. Brian?
Motion to approve non-public minutes for May 2nd.
Moved by Brian is her second. Second by Denise. Changes?
Sue Caswell was also present.
Okay. That addition, any other changes? So, with the addition of adding Sue Caswell, all of us in favor, please raise your hand. Seven in favor. The motion passes. I'll move to announcements, commendations, and comments from the district.
Jerry Shire, principal of the middle school. We had a wonderful service Palooza last Friday. It's kind of cool to see Mr. Kessler. This is something we started several years ago that he also participated in, but we had kids all over the community doing wonderful stuff, giving back. And a good, quick example is, you know, teaching kids things that they've never done, like my responsibility with my advisory. We were painting the dugouts at the high school, and a lot of our kids had never painted in their lives, so it was quite the learning experience. And just real quick too, tomorrow night, I'm headed over to the scholar leader dinner. Maggie Farwell of the Fusion team and Henry Hagan of the Nali team are going to be recognized as scholar leaders, and our middle school jazz band is playing. It's kind of a quick funny thing, it's kind of short on buses right now or drivers, so I'm going to be actually driving a U-Haul cargo van with all the equipment up there. And I try to talk our old friend Al Howland and drive in Dave Irvin's van, but he's tied up for the Red Sox, so Bill Sullivan will drive Dave's van, but it's going to be a great night. Thanks. And also, Al, you know, thanks for all you've done over the years on all these road trips. I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thanks, Jay. Others? Okay. Announcements, commendations, and comments from the district, from the board, I'm sorry? Yeah?
Well, on that note, the jazz band went, it wasn't this, I'm losing track of the weeks, but they went up to Burlington and did their, they do Disney one year in Burlington the other year. And they played at Ben &amp; Jerry's, and they also played at, there's a Kids' Day festival down in the lake, and they did an awesome job. And I have to really give a compliment to the kids because they, they just really were well behaved and really professional in the work that they did. And a big shout out to Lori and my wife, who did a lot of work organizing the trip. So, it was, it was a lot of fun.
Great. Denise?
I attended the middle school string orchestra and the band concerts, and they were absolutely unbelievably impressive and huge. It was funny because I attended the orchestra one, and I, wow, there's so many more kids now taking strings, and gee, I wonder about the impact on the band. Well, the band is huge too, so, so that was really, really cool to see.
I'd just like to express, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Brian.
I just wanted to, yeah, thanks for the Mastway PTO of putting on the Mayfair. Caught the tail end of it, and it was a mob scene of kids and cakes and games and everything else, but as usual, it was another successful fundraising event.
Great. I'd just like to express my appreciation, and probably sure that board members also, for Barrett Christina and the New Hampshire School Boards Association, which works so hard, and with all the other organizations, these, you know, the Administrators Association, the NEA, to defeat the voucher bill, which, you know, was defeated by five, five votes, which would have drained money from the public school system. So, these people worked really, really hard, and it was a really tight vote and a good result, I think. Others? No? District reports, Assistant Superintendent?
Thank you. I just have a couple of announcements, and I'm going to turn it over to a special guest that's going to be presenting on the extended learning opportunities. I wanted to let you know, we have largely completed all the standardized testing this spring. The only thing we have left now is the science assessment with juniors at the high school, which is going to happen the first week of June. I got to commend Jay and the middle school staff. I mean, they, they showed the lion's share of that effort because they have to test five through eight English Language Arts and Math, and then they also do fifth and eighth in Science. And it went off flawless. I can't say enough about Nico Vanes, the IT director over there, just, she just does a magnificent job facilitating all that. The early results, they don't have the aggregate scores, but one of the neat things about switching to the New Hampshire SAS is the scores are individually available immediately. So, as soon as the state, the window closes on June 8th, as soon as the state officially blesses the results, we can immediately be sending those out to parents, so parents will be getting those reports. I've been looking at them as they've been completing, and our kids are doing fabulously well. I'm really looking forward to being able to share with you that data, but things have gone extremely well for a new test, virtually no glitches, so feel really good about that. The other thing I wanted to mention is we're, the deadline for signing up for REACH is rapidly approaching. REACH is the summer program that we run in the district. June 1st is the deadline by which we will guarantee that if you sign up for a camp, that we will be able to honor it. After that, we have to make decisions about which camps we're going to be able to run based on numbers. So far, signup has been amazing. Just checking a report from Deb Byrne, our REACH coordinator, and 236 kids have signed up for various things this summer, so it's really good. One of the questions we get a lot from, from parents is, they go to sign up their kid, and the activity that they want is no longer in the catalog. As, as activities fill up, they actually get pulled from the catalog, so what's in there is what's available. So, if there's a camp that you wanted and it's not there, please know that it's just, it was very popular amongst a lot of people. So, anyway, just about two and a half weeks left, I encourage families to make those final decisions and get signed up. Okay, I am now going to turn it over to Sean Peschel.
Can I just ask a question about the testing? With the shorter testing, does that make, does that make a difference? The tests are shorter?
It definitely, we, basically what ended up happening, it takes roughly three days with each grade level to do, with two hours a day of testing to rotate through. So, yeah, it is no question, it's about 40% less testing than we've had to do in the past. And so certainly, for the individual child, what it means is probably one week that there's a focus on testing, and so you do the Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, you're doing the different tests, and then the end of the week is makeups for kids who weren't there. So, it definitely minimizes the disruption to the average student and the teams. At the, both Mastway and Moheramit, they finished up their testing last week. They don't have science to do, so they only had two tests, two hours each. So, for them, it was about 50% less testing, so there's no question, it was far more seamless in terms of the, the school schedule. I would also mention on that note, we had a very small number of parents who were, who opted out or refused their child to participate in testing. It was a very small number, so I think people are far more invested in it.
Great, thanks.
Great. Any other? Okay, and I'm going to invite Sean Peschel up to talk to you about the ELO program, just to remind you, you may, last year, this is the first year of Sean's, of this role of Sean as the ELO coordinator, and he's here to kind of give you an idea of how things went in the first year. Sean?
Thank you, Todd. Also, board, chairman, and superintendent of schools, thank you very much for inviting us this evening to present to you. I have a quick little slideshow of how we're progressing through our first year of implementation of our ELO program. It's been a great success so far, and I want to share some of those successes with you this evening. So, you need to think about ELOs as an emerging new era of education. When people ask, like, what do you do for a job? I'm an ELO coordinator. They say, well, what's that? Well, if you break it down to these ideas that I'm working with students to individualize, personalize, and customize their high school experiences, okay? Where through that process, we are exposing, exploring, and experiencing education in a different manner, in an alternative manner, not alternative in a less manner, but alternative in a different way. And also think about ELOs as an opportunity to enhance, so to build upon what we currently are offering at the high school for our curriculum, and also expanding it to adding on to what we're doing. So, not only having the traditional classroom experience, we're going to enhance that and build upon it, but also build from it. And of course, this all leads to our overall goal of working together to engage every learner. So, ELOs are an opportunity to empower and encourage our students. So, if you look at the PowerPoint chart there, I wanted to start off with the idea of being student-driven. This is kind of a new concept for our school. It's a shift for the students, but also a shift for the teachers. The students become the experts, while the teachers become the mentor, the coach, the advisor, the consultant, or the collaborator. It's individualized, not only individual for each student, but also we have had some group experience, where maybe two or three students are working collaboratively on an ELO together. And also ELOs that are program-based, so we've gone out into the community, either the community close by to Oyster River High School, but also the greater community, reaching farther and further to some programs that are available through some corporations and some companies and businesses. It's competency-based, either being aligned with the competencies that are currently in place for our courses, or developing new competencies for new experiences that students are creating. It's also academically rigorous. Students are giving, providing feedback so far, students that have participated in these ELOs are saying that it's actually more difficult than sitting in the traditional classroom. The next part is the idea that it's hands-on, experiential. The students are engaged, they're motivated, and they're determined to be successful in these ELOs. It's also building skills that are 21st century. So, if you walk into any classroom at the high school, you'll see the 21st century expectation posters in every room of being collaborative communicators, critical thinkers, problem solvers. These ELOs are bringing those soft skills or transferable skills to life. So, students are able to communicate, collaborate, create, and be driven. So, not only do ELOs have an academic component to it, or piece, but also these four other parts. The first piece that we look at is reflection. This is where the student is actually in the driver's seat. They're the ones that get to choose the route, create the map, and drive the experience. We then move into the idea of research. Research, you can think about as the pit stops along the way, when students need to either downshift or rev up and move forward. Because as they're becoming experts in their area of interest and area of study, they at some time need to step aside, think about where we're going, what we're doing, maybe do some outreach, some research, and then move forward. The next piece is the product. As students make their way through this experience, they're thinking about how can they demonstrate mastery of the competencies that are, that are being mastered, that they've created. And then lastly, the presentation piece, where this all comes together, and students then present their experience, present what their growth targets have been, and make sure that the mastery of their competency has been met. You'll also see that these are all kind of connected together, so during that presentation piece, the students are actually presenting their product, their tangible evidence of what they've learned, which comes from the research that they've done through the process, which comes from the reflection. So, thinking about where I want to go, how am I going to get there? If I hit a blockage, what am I going to do to back up and try again and move forward? Some examples of our ELOs that we have kind of categorized at the school so far have been independent coursework, so we're going to think about these as new experiences or new courses that aren't currently offered at the school. So, for example, we have had a student do, looking into educational theory and philosophy, and part of that, creating our own philosophy of education. We also have a student that's looking at the role of the democratic decision-making process in New Hampshire public schools. We also have advanced studies. That's a category that, when a course that's offered at the school, but students want to go beyond that, but we don't offer the next level, so we currently offer Pottery I and Pottery II, but we don't offer a Pottery III. So, we have some students that have actually created that Pottery III in the focus of glazing, or in the focus of throwing clay in other manners, other ways. We have career exploration, which are short snippets of time, kind of a job shadow experience. We have internships, so that's an extension of that job shadow, where it's more, more planned out, more thorough, and takes place more often. We're looking ahead into the idea of having teaching assistants and peer instructors, so it's currently in the research, development, and design phase. We've had some piloted teaching assistants this year that reported out so far, and we've had success with that. We're going to be kind of going back as a school and thinking how we can hone in and create that even better. Virtual Learning Academy, or V-Lax, is looked upon at the school as an opportunity that's an ELO. It's, it's looked upon as an ELO because it's not offered in our four brick walls, so it's a extension of what we're doing. Career Technical Education is also looked upon as an ELO, because again, we don't have career technical programming at our school, but we have access to it in other districts, Dover, Somersworth, and Rochester. Another, another ELO would be Running Star, Early College, the CATS program, with our partnerships with Great Bay, Manchester Community College, Southern New Hampshire University, and UNH. So, now, the extraordinary, the special part of the presentation and the highlight of this evening is the expression of some enthusiasm from some students, parents, and community teachers and community partners that have gone through their ELO experience so far. So, at this time, oh, the updated version has the correct names. We've got Ethan Kessler tonight, graduating class of 2018, and also Lisa Kessler, his mom, to speak about their experience with their ELO.
Awesome. So, my name's Ethan Kessler. I'm a senior at Oyster River High School. I'll be attending UNH Paul School next year, majoring in Business Administration with a focus in Entrepreneurial Studies. For my ELO, what I decided to do was, I wanted to study and focus in the area of business. So, I've taken a bunch of business classes at Oyster River, really liked it, and I wanted to dive a little bit deeper. So, what I decided to do is, I had an idea to create a business, to quantify a kid's athletic ability, to better enhance their chance of playing at a professional sports level. And what this does is, we plan to create a website in which all the kids would try out, all their scores go to a website, and then they can compare each other against other kids in their age group around the entire country. And then it will also set them up on a linear path of projection to a professional level, and then as long as they meet their goals along the way, theoretically, they have a better chance at playing at the professional level. So, through this experience, it's definitely helped me become better at writing a business plan, presentation skills, talking with other people, working in groups, because throughout this experience, I couldn't have done it alone. I had worked with primarily Adam McCass at the high school. I took entrepreneurship last year, so I had some general knowledge of how to write a business plan, but I didn't know the bigger parts of the business plan. So, like SWOT and PESL analysis, marketing analysis, all those different strategies to promote my business, I was able to work on more in-depth with him. So, instead of a six to seven-page business plan that you create in entrepreneurship, I was able to create a professional 13 to 14-page business plan that I feel confident I can present to anyone I want. I was also able to create a presentation that was able to accompany my business plan, and I could present it to administrators, teachers, anyone that wanted an idea of what I was doing. My goals for this ELO, at the end goal was, I wanted to start this company. It's something I want to do, I'm passionate about, but in order to reach that end goal, I needed to get a basis of starting a business plan, to jot my ideas down, where I'm going to get financing from, then build a presentation that I can go and I can present it to somebody and say, here's what I want to do, here's where I want to go. And then I needed, after both of these things were done, which is like the end goal, my ELO, I now am going to go to UNH, study four years, then do another two years for an MBA, and then hopefully build the business after college. So, without this ELO experience, I don't know if I could have been able to get to that end goal where I want to be, or at least not as quick. So, now, at the end of the ELO, I've met my goals. I've definitely got a great jump on where I want to go in the future, and I really enjoyed being on my own, being self-driven, being able to work at my own pace instead of having to follow a school course load where, yes, it is, like, okay, you have an instructor, he's telling you what to do, but I like, I'm more of the person of who likes to sit down. I want to get done an entire, like, business summary, which is the opening part of a business plan, and I want to do that in a day. Well, in a class period, you have maybe 20 minutes to work on it, so you can get a paragraph or two done, where I wanted to sit down to get all my thoughts done, down on that day. And with the ELO, I could really do that if I wanted to. And then, did I meet my end goals? Yes, I think I did. So, awesome. Is there any questions? Yes.
Just in terms of the credit that you received, did you receive a full credit, half a credit? How did that work?
We're still working on credits a little bit.
Oh, okay.
It's past scale, we know that much.
Yeah.
But we're looking at how do we measure the credit in terms of the number of competencies? So, the thing with ELOs-
You're going to have to come up.
The thing with ELOs is that it's anywhere, anytime, and we're kind of taking time away from the experience. So, in a traditional, traditional classroom, if you're in a course for half of a year, it's a half a credit. If you're in a course for a full year, it's a full credit. Ours are going to be, instead of being time-based, ELOs are open enrollment, so they start when they start and they end when they end, because students are able to move when ready. So, we're going, we're looking at having the ELOs be measured in the number of competencies to be equal in the number of credits. So, for example, if a course, if an ELO has maybe four to five competencies, that may be a half credit. If it has eight to 10 competencies, a full credit. So, again, being in the first year of implementation and the kind of piloting and looking at it, that's one of those things that we're discussing as a school. Any other questions?
Can you introduce your mom?
Awesome. This is my mom, Lisa.
Hi, thank you for having us. There are so many things, positive things I can say about the ELO, but I hope his energy alone and the enthusiasm came through with, with what a positive experience it was for him. And I think for, I have two more coming along, so I'm really grateful that this program's in place. And let me tell you a few reasons why. One, it's pretty apparent, he really got some great skills about project management, and I don't know, most of us all have jobs that we have to manage tasks, and we have to manage work, and we have to get things done. He actually had to run that. He had to run it like a little mini-business. And I think that skill is really transferable, both in college and in the professional world. He had to manage his own time, which is, like he said, he's, he's one of those get-it-done kind of kids, but he knew he had to get it done, and he had to manage that in a schedule that was really reasonable. He also got to learn something in much greater depth than was available at Oyster River, and I think that's really wonderful, that he, he said, hmm, I have an interest in business, I'm kind of curious, I might major this in college. And then as he went through this program, he was able to say, this is awesome, I love entrepreneurship, I'm really interested in this. He would come home at night, and we'd talk about marketing strategies, and we'd, he'd run some financial statements by me, and I'd say, ah, yeah, that's way too low, there's way more expenses there, or what, do you think those revenues are reasonable? And we'd have these great give and takes. He was enthusiastic, he was energized, he was interested, he was definitely engaged. So, I think that's really important, and it also helped him clarify, what, what is his, what are his passions? What kind of things does he like and what doesn't he like educationally? And for a senior, that's really terrific. He was able to really define who he is and really what motivates him. I think the other things, you know, we talked, I talked a little bit about those skills that you get that are transferable in the real world, but there is a list of them that come from when you have to be that leader on your own, that he definitely walked away from. He had great support, thank goodness, through the school. There was great resources available, but he had to hunt them out, he had to find them, he had to do the research, he had to figure it all out, all on his own, which was really fabulous. I think that that program really helped leave him very well-prepared for his college experience. And I think, the other thing that I think is important is, we talked about, you know, Sean mentioned engaging every learner, and I have two other kids who are nothing like him. He's one of a kind. But they're bright, and they're interesting, and they're interested in very different things. And I could see ELOs being very applicable to a variety of students. You know, my middle son's really into technology. Technology is, is his passion. Oyster River has some offerings, but not tremendous offerings. I could see him really being able to pick a topic and go really deep into it, and this program would provide him the structure he would need to get that kind of exposure, but, you know, where he wouldn't have to go somewhere else. I don't have to send him to Great Bay, or UNH, or somewhere else. And he could actually get the same, same kind of experiences that Ethan got in terms of building that skill set and deciding where his passions lie. So, I'm really grateful this program was here. Questions?
I'll just say, it's kind of interesting, because we, you know, I think you did the same with the entrepreneurship at UNH this fall.
Yeah.
And it's like kind of striking that as a high school experience, you're getting a chance to do something, it was really seniors at UNH that are doing it. I think it's really good exposure, because you go in kind of with a head start of what's expected of you through.
Yeah, I've sat in on the presentations like you have with, I volunteer at UNH a lot with the business program. I think it's awesome. And the entrepreneurship program, and the stuff he was talking about, and the stuff we had to address, or he had to address, and he'd come home and tell me about it, was, was really relevant to what he's going to learn in college. He is well-prepared to begin those conversations and start that learning, and that's really exciting for him. So.
Thank you.
I just had a question, just kind of about scheduling, because we've looked at, you know, how many courses students take or feel they have to take. And then, I'm just wondering in terms of growing this, you know, how you're going to manage students taking a time-intensive, in-depth project like this, and fitting that in, in a culture where people are expected to take six or seven courses during their schedule? I mean, it seems to me, it's kind of like, how, how do you manage this tension?
It's there. Again, we're rolling it out with juniors and seniors first. At some point, maybe rolling it down to ninth grade through senior year. Juniors and seniors have more flexibility in their schedule, so Ethan actually did have some free periods, or some periods off, where he was able to dedicate some time to his ELO. There are some students too, that we'll hear from, that didn't, that carried a full course load, and also did the ELO too. So, it just, it's, I think it ties in that time management piece. Did the students feel stressed at sometimes? Yes, but I think the, the release of that time requirement, that neither one of these students you'll hear from tonight had a deadline. The only deadlines that they had were the ones that they self-produced. So, students would come to me like, oh my God, I'm not going to get this done in time. Don't worry, there's no time, it's on your side. If you want to extend it out another week, or two weeks, or a month, go ahead and do that. So, that flexibility of deadlines, they're there, but they're self-created and self-driven. So, I think that the tension is there, but that they're able to manage that on their own.
Okay, thanks.
One of the things too, is periodically as a board, you probably hear about the buzzwords of education of being career and college-ready, or college and career-ready. The ELOs do both, their career-college-ready components. Both these students that are able to talk about their ELOs in their college essay, or Both these students that are able to talk about their ELOs in their college essay, or during their interview for a job or for a position, which is going to make them stand out uniquely above anybody above and beyond ones that take a traditional course load. So for example, Ethan, if he just took the business classes, business classes that Oyster River offers, and if you compare him to another student, another school that just takes business classes, they're pretty equitable. But now, with Ethan's experience as an ELO, and also you hear from Maddie, from her experience, it's going to make them stand out, and admissions counselors and HR representatives are going to be all over these individuals because of the fact that they have had this experience. Okay. Next, I'd like to call up Madison "Maddie" Gask, cost of 2019, and her mom and dad, Thomas and Melissa Gask. Yeah, oh, however you want to do it, your choice.
Hi, I'm Maddie. I'm a junior at Oyster River High School, obviously. And so I participated in an ELO this fall through BAE Systems, which is an engineering-based military defense contractor based out of Nashua. I applied for the program in late summer, kind of a little bit on a whim. I was, I kind of wanted, I wanted to do it, but I was more excited about just, just trying something new, new, and trying something that I hadn't really thought about doing before. So I was interested in engineering from a young age. I did a Lego Robotics program in fifth grade and sixth grade, and kind of dropped out of it because schedules got busy, things started happening, I went to high school. And I kind of realized that I kind of wanted to get back into it. So this program was a very useful way for me to figure that out. I went into the program thinking that I was going to be very, very behind, like technically. I was expecting to go in and be thrown into a situation where I didn't necessarily know exactly what I was doing, and I was going to have to kind of learn as I went. And I was very pleasantly surprised when I got there, and there were many other students who were in the same situation as me. So it was very, it was very good to be able to go into a situation like that, being a little bit stressed out at first, and then kind of just like, like, the whole idea evolved in my brain into something that was a little less stressful and a little more fun and entertaining and stuff. So I also went in with what I thought was kind of underdeveloped people skills. And so by the end of the, by the end of the program, I found that those skills had greatly developed, as Iowa had been elected as my team leader. Within, to give a little background information, within the program, we were grouped up into, it was 20 of us, we were grouped up into five groups of four kids. And each person, each kid within the group was in charge of different disciplines. I was elected group leader, and the other three students in my group were elected heads of different types of engineering. So there was a mechanical engineering aspect, a software engineering aspect, and a, sorry, electrical engineering aspect. Thank you. And it was generally a really good experience, and definitely gave me something to look at for what I want to do going into college. I had a very wide variety of career opportunities and different subjects that I wanted, might, may want to study in college, and I found that by participating in this program, it helped me narrow it down a little bit more. I'm looking into biomechanical engineering at this point, and I found that, especially involving this as an ELO, helped me go even more in-depth into, in-depth into a program that seemed, that could have just been taken in a fun way, and I was able to apply it to my future and figure out exactly what I wanted to do through the reflection process and also presenting it. And, yeah. Okay, so.
Questions for?
Questions, sorry.
How did your experience with BAE change or affect your view for the future of engineering or your path?
It was really, it was very interesting, because it, the people who were, I was from the farthest, I was from the farthest school from the actual program. Most of the people attending the program were part of the Manchester area, Nashua area and surrounding high schools. So it was cool to be able to be like immersed in a, immersed in a group of students I hadn't necessarily been like introduced to before. I made a lot of new friends and met kind of a different caliber of students, not necessarily better or worse, just different. So it was, it was really good to be able to do that, and it was also really interesting to see how many people were so like, very much involved and interested in all this engineering stuff, because although I went in kind of at the same level as a lot of other people, there were some students there who had taken classes, who had done all this stuff, who had self-taught themselves how to software program and all this stuff. And I found that it was very beneficial to be able to learn from those students, as well as make new friends and learn with everybody else along the way. Any other questions?
I just had a question about time. You know, with this, would you be doing this in the weekends? Would you be doing this after school?
Oh, sorry, yeah. So I had it once a week, Wednesday nights. It was, so it was a like two-hour program, sometimes it ran a little over, sometimes it went a little under, but, um, yeah, it was Wednesday nights, once a week, and it lasted for 12 weeks. We had a set schedule throughout the program, so by the ends of it, we had a competition where we, where we kind of pitted our designs, products against each other to try to see who could accomplish the most tasks in a certain number of time, or time limit, so.
Thanks.
Yeah. Anything else?
Any questions for Maddie? So, want to bring your parents up?
Cool, yeah. All right, so my parents are now going to come up and speak. This is Thomas Gask, and this is Melissa Gask.
Welcome.
Not mom and dad.
You can start.
Hey, everyone. So, so yeah, Maddie's dad. So I think what we, what we recognize with this particular program, you mentioned the time piece, I think, I think what was nice about this particular program was it was structured so that the students were focused for that two-hour period, once a week, 12 weeks, and they're, and the, and it was structured so that they could meet certain milestones so that by the time they got to the end of the 12-week period, they had, you know, finished designs and accomplished a pretty significant project. So in, in Maddie's case, I think what she recognized, you know, she mentioned how she's kind of still feeling out where, where she might fit, and what she might want to study in college and that kind of thing. Um, you know, I'm, I have an engineering background, so, so maybe I pushed her a little bit into this program, right? But I think, I think the one thing that she gained out of this was, you know, she wasn't as far behind as maybe she thought she was technically compared to some of the other kids. But I think what she really came out of it was, she really developed some leadership skills, you know, like she mentioned, she was the team captain, you know, she had to really corral these kids and make sure they were on track. You know, they ended up with some challenging aspects towards the end where their design didn't really work, they, the way they intended, you know, so, but, but they were able to work through kind of those issues. And, um, you know, and, and she ended up winning sort of the, what's called an impact award, it's kind of like the most valuable player, so, which was, which was great for her, built, helped build her confidence, you know, and it showed that, that her peers and, you know, the program was run by, by active engineers, you know, so it showed, you know, demonstrated to her that they valued those leadership skills, so.
Excellent. So I kind of want to circle back on the ELO piece of this, which was that when Maddie looked into doing this program, again, she said it was on a whim, it truly was, like, hey, I just noticed this, what do you think? She's like, yeah, sure, I'll do it. And I'm like, well, how are you going to fit this in? Good question. You know, so she had to take an evening off from, she's a rower, so she had to take evening off, which is a really big deal when you miss one practice a week and you're not in your boat, so she made some sacrifices. Full schedule last fall, but was able to make it through the program because it was structured, you know, she was able to, to get there, et cetera. But a couple weeks, or probably a week into the program, you know, it dawned on us, I'm like, Maddie, do you think you can get credit for this? This is like really well, this program is really well-structured. And so that's where that conversation started, started with her counselor first, not realizing that Sean was on board, and then, and then kind of, you know, was able to kind of flow through the program, and she was able to connect with Sean and be able to, you know, do the credit piece with this. So that was kind of like an added benefit. And definitely, I think if nothing else, in these kinds of situations, it allows students to not just, I mean, when you're a 16-year-old junior starting your school year and you're told, you need to figure out what you want to do for college if that's the way you want to go, it's kind of silly. I mean, at 16 years old, it's really tough to know what you want to do, especially when you're thinking, hey, piano, art, you know, engineering, I want to be a doctor, I want to do this. There's all these different things that they possibly could do. So if anything, these ELOs can help decide whether or not they want to do something or not want to do something. So I'm pretty sure she doesn't want to do software engineering or electrical engineering, right? But I think what she discovered is that soft skill, learning that she can be a leader, and that she can, you know, impact different avenues, and that's something she can take with her. So, but I just want to say that, Sean, your confidence in Maddie and your support with her in the program, and at the end, he came to Nashua to her presentation, she presented much better than Tom and I are presenting right now. We were like, whoa, where does this come from? But it was really great to see all of that, and Sean recognized the work that she put into the program, and even took some time afterwards to send our family an email and acknowledge that progress. And that was really important, so I just want to, you know, I guess, thank Sean for your work through that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Questions?
Any questions?
Sounds like you both raised amazing children.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much.
So you may be wondering, I don't walk on water, although I do try to. My role as the coordinator is kind of like an academic or educational social worker, where we have needs of students, and I'm linking up to the resources to make those needs and resources come together for these experiences. So that's kind of like what, how the coordinator role, how I see the coordinator role. Another piece of the experience is the mentor teacher or the community partner. These students are not out there to hang out to dry, they actually have some mentorship and some coordination, some supports from the coordinator, and also some collaborative resources from, again, those teacher mentors or those community partners. So at this time, I'd like to call up Lori Grant to speak about her experience as these roles, in these roles.
Well, you can if you want to. Okay, no, good. Go to the evening. Hi, thanks for having me here. My name's Lori Grant, and I work for Shepherd Learning Center, and I'm contracted by the district to provide the preschool services. So I am the program coordinator for the preschool education program. Yes, you both spoke so well, so articulated, they did much better than I'm going to do. So my role with the ELO project is twofold that I want to talk about. First of all, we have interns that work in the PEP program, and we've had interns who worked in the PEP program since we started there eight or more years ago now. What Sean and I are working on this year, for the most part, is we're kind of calling it a transition year, where we're just trying to formalize it a little bit. Right now, students come in through their counselors, are set up with the PEP program on a, on a period that they have off during the day, so it's like every B period or every C period for at least half of the year. They come in and they're pretty much on the floor with children, which is a great help for us, honestly. They're wonderful with children, we love being at the high school for that resource. We're trying to formalize it a little bit, though. Students come in, and they usually come in because they love to be with children, you would hope, right? So when they come in, that, that's a great start, but what is it that they really want to learn when they get in there? So we're trying to start thinking about how to have those conversations with them from the beginning. So if they're really interested in social-emotional development, we can help them target that. Or if they're really interested in teaching in an inclusive setting, we can help target that. But we can individualize it for each student versus sort of making it a, come on in and why don't you hang out with preschoolers at snack time? But just making it a little bit more formal and a little bit more educational for them. My role with them in that case is not, not too much, actually, at the moment. But what I hope to do is have regular contact with each one of those interns, so that I can check in with them about what they're learning about, for example, social-emotional development. What is it that you want to do next? Where are we going to go? What are some resources? We might have them in our setting, I might know of them, I might know area preschools who know about them, but somehow help them travel down the right road. He's very good about helping me keep it student-focused. Like, I, I consider myself a pretty student-focused educator, however, he's taking it to a new level. So I'll start to talk about something, and he'll say, yep, but it's all about the student. I'm like, all right, yeah, I didn't mean, didn't mean it like that, but anyways. So that's, that's one of the ways we do it, that I'm involved anyways. The second, the second way is that I have some students this year who are connecting with me for a specific topic. One student is looking at nature-based learning. Another student is just wanting to learn, well, it's kind of interesting, because this is part of the individualized part, and how you don't know what you want to do when you're 16 years old, as you said. Starting with wanting to know a lot about working with children with autism and about behavioral strategies in working with them and helping them to communicate. She got into the preschool classroom, and she started to work with alongside a teacher, and as she did that, she started to realize there were a lot of other things going on in there. And so while that's definitely, definitely an interest, her topic and her focus really expanded to working in the classroom as a whole. And that was okay, that, that's great, that she was able to shift in that way. So again, helping her to think about what are the resources, what do you need in order to learn what you want to learn, and how are we going to help you to demonstrate that you did in fact learn it. The other thing that I just wanted to say, and I didn't pay attention to notes at all, so I hope I said all of it. I'm a teacher in the building, I'm the program director of the preschool program, I'm also a parent of a student in the building, so I, I know a lot of kids in there. And it's been really fun for me this year to just hear students start to say, we don't have that class, but I could go to the ELO coordinator. And they're getting really excited about the possibility for this exploration, that's just about them. So, and it's fun for me to be able to say, when they say, I'd love to learn more about child nutrition, and we don't have that class, you could talk to Sean. Go see Mr. Preschel. So there, I'm starting to see the enthusiasm among high school students. I feel like there's one more thing, let me just look really quick. So I think I just want to mention this, you've mentioned soft skills, a lot of people have talked about that, and I've seen that with students, both in my role as mentor teacher and also as a community partner. These students come in and they're not quite sure what to do, not quite sure what they want to say, not quite sure what they want to learn, not quite sure how to go about doing it, but I see them grow and mature so much during the course of the semester or year or however long it is, even just in terms of setting up meetings with us. So they need to set it up with me, but if it's a meeting with both of us, they've got to check his, with his person too, and it's got to work for all of us, and I forgot to check with this person. So it hasn't always worked, but that's been a good, it's a good life strategy. They've learned to articulate what they want, and that's really a neat thing to see with high school students. Do you have questions for me?
Thank you, Lori.
Blah, blah. Thank you.
Just a few more slides and we'll be done. Another thing too, with that presentation piece, that the students are, again, in charge of the whole process, so when it comes down to the presentation, they actually get to choose what day it's going to be, before, during, or after school, who's going to be the audience, and they give some suggestions of, you might want to invite your school counselor, maybe a friend or two, maybe some parents, your parents. I typically also suggest Ms. Philipone or Ms. Mackinoff to kind of see how the program is evolving over time. And I think actually Mr. or Dr. Morris is going to be a part of a presentation coming up soon too, for one of our students, who's been, it was his idea to invite the superintendent along, so Jim will be in the room with us coming up soon. So again, it's their own comfort level. If they want to, if they want to present to a classroom of 25, they could. If they want to present to a small group of three or four, they can. One of the experiences we had in the fall was a senior, rather quiet, kind of introverted, but did her ELO in an art focus, and it was a small group, but yet, during that presentation, she lit up, she blossomed, she exploded. And having Ms. Kara, her school counselor in the room during that presentation, Ms. Kara was actually able to write to that ELO experience, the presentation experience, in her college, college recommendation letter for the student applying off to school. So just want to throw that out there. So not only am I the social worker for academic and educational experiences, but I'm also the travel guide and travel consultant too. And the reason why I say that is that in New Hampshire, we're starting to get it. The business sector is starting to understand that the whole idea of stay, work, and play, it's an initiative going on in the state for a while now, we have a problem in New Hampshire where students are going through high school, but then leaving to go to college and not coming back, and that's a problem. And so each business sector is starting to figure out that we need to reach down to the high school level, maybe even middle school, and even elementary school level, to build those partnerships and build those connections earlier. So throughout the school year or calendar year, we have different business sectors taking on the ownership of different months. And so we've been offering those exposure field trips, get students out into industry, have the behind-the-scenes experiences, and actually see what it's like to be in those fields. So upcoming in September, we're going to be, we are going to be participating in Construction Transportation Month, that's put on by the New Hampshire Construction Career Days Incorporated. We had into this year, we're going to be doing it next year. October is Manufacturing Month. We, this year, were able to go to Lint down in Stratum, and actually see that there are 8 million truffle balls made per year, and those truffle balls are worldwide, all created here in New Hampshire and Stratum, New Hampshire, which is probably pretty cool. And that's organized by the New Hampshire Extension Partnership. March is Girls in Technology Month, we did not participate this year, but we will next year, and that's put on by the Department of Education's Bureau of Career Technical Education. April was Hospitality Month, they're the newest organization to come on board to offer an ownership of a month. We had 18 students that went off and went behind the scenes of the Flag Hill Winery, Distillery, Cratering, and Events, and also the Three Chimneys Inn. What was interesting from this experience is that the students were so engaged and active in those tours, that both business owners have opened up their doors for job shadows and internships in the future, and some students are actually being employed by those two organizations to date, which is awesome. And then May, this month, is our, is Healthcare Month. So far, we've had 37 students go out to Portsmouth Regional Hospital, Exeter Hospital, and we're going to be coming up, going to Langdon Place of Dover next week, and we currently have permission slips coming in for that. So not only are we doing some tours, but we're also building some, some business partnerships, So not only are we doing some tours, but we're also building some business partnerships, again, for those job shadows and for those internships. We have outreach to Safran Aerospace in Rochester, Pratt &amp; Whitney over in North Berwick, Maine. Service Credit Union reached out to us, looking for some student-aged tellers that actually changed their hiring qualifications to bring it down to the age of 17. So we have two students that recently interviewed for positions at the UNH branch. Fingers crossed that both students get those positions. We also are working with Harmony Homes on Route 4. They've reached out to us, looking for volunteers to work in their activities department, so that's currently in the works. And also, we are looking to partner with Riverside Rest Home and Webster at Rye. These are two long-term care facilities in our area, and we're going to be partnering with a statewide initiative called Music and Memory, working with patients or individuals with Alzheimer's and dementia and merging music into their lives. And it's just, it's amazing to see what happens when you put music into those dementia and Alzheimer's patients and how they come to life, because many times, those two conditions kind of make you introverted, and music opens them up. So we're going to have students that are involved in technology, students that are involved in music, students that are involved in healthcare, to kind of work in those, on that initiative. And then lastly, some exciting news is that Oyster River this year, we are being represented on the ELO Network, so it's a state organization, so we are being represented on the leadership team. Also, Oyster River was a part of the ELO Coordinator of the Year Selection Committee, so we were kind of making some gains there. Also, Oyster River, for the first time ever, hosted the Seacoast Regional ELO Coordinator Meeting in February. That was very exciting, and Dr. Morris and Assistant Superintendent Mr. Allen were there to enjoy that event. Also, too, in the supporting evidence tonight, the Oyster River program was highlighted in the recent edition of the New Hampshire Business Review Magazine, so that article was in your packet. Also, Oyster River sent five faculty members to a two-day free training on ELOs in April. We're also going to be sending five more faculty members to a training in June. Again, building the capacity in our building, having faculty and staff understand what an ELO is, and to be not threatened by them, but also to engage and embrace them. Also, Oyster River, along with Winnicott and White Mountain Regional High School, has been accepted to present a three-session series at the New Hampshire Education Design Studio Summer Conference, and the three titles are "On Your Mark," "Initiating a Student-Centered ELO Program," "Get Set," "Developing a Competency-Based ELO," and then "Go: Assessing and Performance-Based Assessments and Project-Based/Work-Based ELO Programs." Any questions for myself?
Sean, what did you leave for next year to do?
Much, much more. Stay tuned. No, it's been a great working with the faculty and staff, with students of Oyster River High School, again, being my first year here, 17th year in education, and it's just, it's amazing. I go home, I come to work every day pinching myself, and I go home with bruises because I pitched myself during the day, too. The leadership that that building has, the faculty and staff, the student body in that building, it's amazing. It's definitely a building that cares about students, that is engaged educationally and also career-focused, too. It's so amazing. Thank you for adding this program to your offerings, and thanks for hiring me, too.
Thank you, Sean.
Thank you.
I had a question.
Yes, Tom.
I was wondering about capstone experiences and whether, like, I was at this high school in Pennsylvania, and they had, they were instituted the AP capstone, where I think you take a course in your junior or sophomore year in terms of being able to do, you know, do library research and make a case, and then in your senior year, you have a project. And then it's under the umbrella of AP, so you get AP credit for that. Is that, I mean, is that something that you could look at, or is that?
Anything's a possibility with an ELO, which is amazing.
Because it's essentially, one of the issues you're dealing with is tying it into course credit. And as an AP course, you're kind of tying, you know, there's a kind of tradition of giving credit for that, so that could be an elective that students could take their senior year. I just throw that out. I mean, it just seemed like a possibility.
Definitely. It could be, and it is. ELOs, again, it's very much what we've seen from the students and from the parents in the crowd, that was mostly an experience that led them. I think there's a shift in education where before, or in the past, it's been the traditional system of kind of a scavenger hunt for credit, so you have to do this to get that, do this to get that credit, and half-credit here and half-credit there. This is more the experience in embracing that educational, lifelong learning kind of concept. The idea of having student-led conferences has been out there. These ELOs kind of bring that to life, where it's a student-led presentation about what they're doing, how they've engaged in their educational learning. So yes, I think it definitely has the potential of being there.
Okay. One question? Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you. Thanks for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you, everyone. So Sean used most of my time, so I'll be brief. He's not paying attention. So you use most of my time, so I'll be brief.
No, that was very...
It was amazing, Sean.
Yeah, it was good to hear it.
So a couple of things. I just wanted to bring the board up to speed. The Youth Risk Behavior Survey, we finally got the data corrected, and it's back, and at the next board meeting, we'll do a presentation on it. I just, I know that that's something that's been pushed off, but it wasn't pushed off because we didn't want to do it. It was pushed off because of that, I kept on getting, we kept on getting from them. It was reported as an in-era. The next issue I wanted to talk about tonight was just to bring us back to past practice. So in your folder this evening, I gave you the enrollment at the elementary schools. And as you look at those enrollments, the Mohairamet School has maximum enrollment in grades 2, 3, and 4. And maximum enrollment is defined by your school board policy related to what you would like to see the class sizes be, the recommendation. And there are occasions, of course, where we do exceed the recommendation, but what we had been doing for the last several years is if a class was fully enrolled at one elementary school, then any new enrollee would have to go to the other elementary school. So if we look at the Mohairamet and Massway enrollment side by side, you would see that grades 2, 3, and 4 have reached the maximum at Mohairamet. But in Massway, we're looking at them having not met the maximum. So as has been our past practice, any new enrollments starting tomorrow at Mohairamet in grades 2, 3, and 4, those enrollees would be sent over to Massway. And I just want to make sure that the board is reminded of that, because you might get a call from somebody who moves in, you know, in June and says, "But I live in the Mohairamet neighborhood, and I want to go to Mohairamet. The problem is that Mohairamet is already full." So I'm comfortable with that. Okay. Then I'd be really brief. I did want to talk a little bit about the Massway School to give you progress. I passed this out a little bit before the meeting. We are now closing in on the color scheme for the building. This particular sample is the green that we'll use both at Mohairamet and Massway in terms of the windows. And we've had various options. It feels like the silver-gray tone using this material will be the most attractive for the school. The idea of the skylight at the top is to replicate the skylight that we have at the entry at the high school, so that all of our buildings will have sort of an Oyster River stamp when we do it, and it also brings in natural light into a very large entry. The yellow, we're not sold on. We're still looking for color options for this front entry in terms of the walkthroughs. We want to put New Hampshire granite benches here, so that if parents are waiting or students are waiting, they can sit down here. We're going to put, we're going to put bollards, is that the right word, Michael? The block bollards?
To keep vehicles out?
To keep vehicles from driving in up to the school. Now, you laugh at, but we really actually did have somebody drive their car up over into the front entry of, I can't remember if it was Mohairamet or Massway, because they perceived it as, they perceived the walkway as a road, evidently. And so we're playing with the idea of the bollards looking like crayons, so that we would have like a half a crayon against these stanchions, these supports, and then maybe three crayon-looking bollards here to kind of bring out that elementary school feel. So that's where we are as of today, and I do have, just, this would be the same material with a brick-like material at the bottom, and this would be, this is the music classroom, and then the three classrooms. That groundwork has started. So if you've driven by the Massway School, like Brian has and Tom has, because they both mentioned it to me, you'll see that there's been a roadway cut in for vehicles, and they're starting to dig out the parameter of the addition. I also would tell you that there's two classroom teachers that are particularly impacted by this construction, and I've personally talked to them. They couldn't be more professional and more willing to do what it takes to work through the noise. So what Carrie has done is, if you're familiar with the school, we have the North Commons that she usually has her staff meetings in, or PTO meetings in. And so what she's going to do is use that as a rotating spot, so that if Katie or Heather can't be in their classroom because the noise is too much, they can rotate out into the North Commons with their kids. And that's to try to keep, you know, the educational experiences as sane as possible. Both of these teachers are using the construction as a learning experience, just like you would hope they would, but their attitudes couldn't be more positive. So we're continuing to work with staff, and staff is continuing to work with us. So this work is underway. The lighting work is going to be underway, and the windows at Mohairamet are all going to be underway this summer. And so that's where we are right now. I just wanted to make sure you guys had a sense of the starting point.
Is there an R-factor associated with those samples?
Yeah, there's insulation that goes in behind this siding. In addition, this whole front wall where the kindergartens are, that's all going to be rebuilt from the inside. So if you go past the Massway School, they have sort of the 1950s, '60s sort of floor-to-ceiling kind of fill for windows. And as we go forward, what we're trying to do is create a uniform look across the front of the building to really beef up its street appeal, is what I would call it, to make it really look nice, to give it a sense of oneness, because these, this position, this piece, this piece, and this piece were all built at different periods of time. So this gives us a chance to unify the look of the building.
Other questions?
Great. Looks good.
All right, then I am done. Thank you.
Business administrator? Student center report?
Yeah. So last Saturday was the Bobcat Invitational Track Meet, which ran very smoothly. Prom is this Saturday, which has produced a lot of hubbub in the school. Over April break, we had the France and Spain trip, which I mentioned at the last meeting, but I just wanted to give some background. There were 22 students that went to Europe, and they visited both France and Spain, starting in Paris and ending in Barcelona. And I'm told that the students demonstrated immense courage in using the languages that they've either studied for several years or just picked up along the way. There was also the trip that went to Tanzania, and they had a lot of fun. They were really immersed in the culture there, and it was also a part of a service trip. So not only did they get to work with the kids and work with their hands doing construction for the people there, but they also got to meet the people and go on safari and see all the cool stuff that they could. The musical Grease is opening, not tomorrow, but the next Thursday, the 24th, and it'll, we'll have shows on the 24th, 25th, 26th, and 27th, the matinee on Sunday, the 27th. The senior art show is going to be on the 30th. It'll be open during school hours and also from 5:30 to 7:00 PM that day. AP testing is ending this week. It went from last week into this week. It had been, you guys probably know, it had been shifted because several tests had started the day after April break, which had produced a lot of stress for the kids who had tests that day. Yeah, and there's going to be a senior transition forum on the 23rd, so they'll be talked to about their transition from high school into college and how they can do it in the most smooth way possible. Also, the Power of One project presentation is coming up the 29th. The freshmen all do this big project. It's hard to describe, really, but they have this project that they really individualize, and they get to focus on what they want, and they do all sorts of really cool things. And it's really awesome to see what they do, because they just go above and beyond what you think they might be able to. And last, at the last Senate meeting this Tuesday, we began discussing parking for next year, which is a heated discussion among the students, and updating the handbook for next year.
Okay. Thank you. World Language.
Yeah, I'll introduce our presenters in just a second, but I did want to just say a couple of quick things about world language, just to refresh your memories. One memory that's not that long ago. At your last meeting, you approved an additional position at the middle school with the idea of kind of consolidate, strengthening the 6 through 8 program at the middle school. Prior to your very generously making that decision, we'd begun putting together a presentation, largely because we felt we wanted to explain it to you, to convince you that you needed to do that. But you were so kind to move that up. So now, we just really want to explain to you kind of what we would, what we want to accomplish with the position. One of the things I'm really excited about is that the middle and high school world language programs are absolutely 100% together, on board with the direction we want to move in, and we have some very passionate, excited teachers here to tell you about that. Let me just quickly introduce them, and I'll get away and let them speak. The presenters we have here tonight, we have Barb Milliken, Michelle Pennelli, and Leslie Ayer. And I do want to also shout out to the fellow colleagues who are here to provide support, Mary Beaton, Candace French, Elliot Moore, and Joe Dunn, all here to say, "Go get 'em, Tigers." So without further ado, I'll turn it over to the world language teachers.
I have a quick question. I don't know where our presentation is on here.
Alex is coming. Neil's is coming.
Do we have to sign in?
Did you send it?
We did, yeah.
Yep.
I can sign into Google, if I have to.
Yeah, if you want to.
This is where we do our little tap now. And it's Max, it's going to take me a few seconds. Is there no sign-in option? Come on. Just about there. I apologize for this.
Is it loading, Leslie?
It is, yes. It's just, I have to log into my Google account. Okay. There we go. I think we've got it. Fingers caught. Wait, it's here.
The world language is like opening a video.
Too funny.
I mean, we can work without anything. We need to.
I just need to set it to duplicate.
Yeah. Awesome. Okay. Sorry about that.
Thanks, Alex.
Thank you. First, my name is Leslie Ayers, and I would like to say thank you for approving our middle school positions. We are very excited about some new philosophies of teaching that are coming forth from the American Council of Foreign Language Teaching. We, over the last few years as a department, we've started to investigate these new philosophies and what it means to be a world language department. And several of us have had the opportunity to attend several conferences and workshops related to this new idea. Basically, what this idea focuses on is what does it mean to be proficient in a language? A lot of us have had experiences in world language classes of numerous conjugations and translations. All of us have come out, or not all of us, but some of us have come out completely incapable of speaking a language with a native speaker, and others have become very proficient. And this new model kind of focuses on how do we make more people proficient and more capable of conversing with other people in other languages? We have been doing several amounts of reading over the last few years, and recently, I came across an article that expressed the idea that 17% of Americans are proficient in only one language, or more than one language, excuse me, while 54% of Europeans are proficient in more than one language. And so that kind of got us thinking, what's going on? Why are we so far behind our peers in Europe and beyond? And we started to look a lot at what has teaching been like in the past and what has teaching started to look like now that research has come out and now that more teachers are available to converse and discuss this idea? And a few of the things that really came out and that were really important was the importance of connecting our content to the cultures that we're studying. In the past, we've taken minute details of the culture and focused it on them for five minutes, and now they're looking at how can we teach the language? And we started to look a lot, a lot at what has teaching been like in the past and what has teaching started to look like now that research has come out and now that more teachers are available to, to converse and discuss this idea? And a few of the things that really came out and that were really important was the importance of connecting our content to the cultures that we're studying. In the past, we've taken minute details of the culture and focused it on them for five minutes. And now they're looking at how can we teach the language through the culture? Because in reality, language is not just the spoken word or the written word. In reality, it's the, the practices behind that language. It's the cultural festivals that happen. It's the types of food that people eat. We've also looked at the importance of moving away from the textbook. In the past, textbook, textbooks have followed a very specific order of operations. You learn the present tense, you learn the past tense, you learn the direct object pronoun. And in reality, language is not that straightforward. Language is constant. You need to be able to do various things when the moment arises. And so this new model of teaching, or this new philosophy of teaching, focuses on teaching the language as it arises in a more natural manner that mimics a little bit more the first language acquisition process. We are hoping to now move away from focusing on specific grammar points all the time and instead start to focus more on thematic units, which means we're focusing more on the, the vocabulary that's needed to discuss these ideas and teaching the grammar as the extra. That is no longer the major focus. One other thing that's really important now is the connection to technology. At this point in time, the world is basically our oyster. We have access to people in every country in the world for the most part. And with those resources, we are now able to bring authentic language into our classrooms. No longer is the teacher going to be the sole speaker of the language in that room. We're now going to be able to bring in a fluent Spanish speaker via the internet, via YouTube, um, and really get those kids to hear what that authentic accent sounds like. And potentially even connect ourselves to schools in other countries. All right. And, um, let's see, I think I'm going to move on to the next one. So what does this model mean for us as a school? As a school, we are going to begin looking at, again, the authentic idea of language. When you think of your child back home when they're learning English, they start by saying single words in very disconnected sentences. And then slowly, they start to develop the idea of full sentences. They may make errors, um, in general speech, but you start to understand what they're saying. And you're really focusing not on what they're saying, on their saying grammatically, but what they're saying as a meaning, as a whole. Okay? And so what we're trying to do is we're trying to mimic that idea in the sense that we would like to foster our students' ability to be successful in single-word ideas first and eventually move them up from single words to full sentences and beyond, and eventually into paragraph-like discourse and speeches. And so this model, this cone that we have over here on the screen, the inverted pyramid, as they call it, is going to be our driving force behind what we're doing for languages. We're hoping that by the end of study in our program, that our students, or that a majority of our students would be able to reach the intermediate level. With that being said, the reality of us meeting, um, the superior and advanced levels are very difficult after, after only a few years of speech and, and study. So yeah, so that's where we're going for it now. Michelle's going to explain a little bit about what this process is going to look like for us, and go from there.
Excellent, thank you, Leslie. Um, I'm Michelle Pennelli. Just to continue on with this slide, um, using the proficiency-based model, it's very similar to using the competency-based model, where our focus really is shifting on what students can do with the language as opposed to what they can't do. So we're really using that as our stepping stone to move students forward. So it really does allow us to do things like differentiate, um, their learning process as every student is going to go at their own pace. We can really meet them in a much more effective manner using this type of proficiency model as opposed to the grammar-based textbook dictated units that is more of the traditional teaching style. Kids are given more meaningful feedback, um, more frequently so that they can see where their errors are, where they can work, how they can advance themselves. And again, we can really look at pacing them at their own rate so they can move from those different proficiency levels, starting with the novice level and moving up into the intermediate levels as they get into high school. The other really nice thing with this type of model is students are more, um, take more ownership of their learning. Students are actually the focus of what we're doing. And they are, um, basically, um, encouraged to take risks and they're encouraged to use the language, much more so than we've done in traditional paths. And the students really become the leaders of the class, and they are taking control of their own learning. The teacher is no longer talking about the language. They're encouraging the kids to use the language. So we, as the teachers, actually take on more of the role of a facilitator or a collaborator with those students. And we also, in this model, um, want to encourage students to, um, look at the relevance and have the language be relevant to what they are doing, connect it to the curriculum that they are learning, and also bring it to, um, connect with different aspects of twenty-first century learning expectations. So they're actually learning about other cultures, using authentic materials, and using things that are designed for native speakers to get a better sense of the culture and be able to critically think and be able to look at things in a more global sense. This also shifts us from that fixed mindset of needing to learn grammar and lists of vocabulary in order to, um, cover topical units and that may have a minimum of context to it. In this type of model, the focus really is on using the language as a form of communication to learn, um, directly from using technology, be able to learn from people who are native speakers, learn from their experiences, whether it's seeing a video of a young child talking about his house or talking about living in his family. They get a very different experience than in the traditional set. One of the things that we really want to do is engage the students so they become more intrinsically motivated to continue studying language. As Leslie mentioned, many people tend to stop learning languages as they get older. And what we want to do is create lifelong language learners. We want people to really have a passion for it and really choose to continue on with second or even third language acquisition as opposed to just ending their language studies once their requirements have been fulfilled. We also want kids to develop critical thinking skills that allow them to look at things more in the global context. And again, this new methodology really ties in with the standards-based grading system and the competencies that we're working with, um, in this school district. One of the things that we are doing in creating this is we are connecting our units. We are creating thematic units that are connected to the AP themes. And this is a slide of the American School of Dubai. And this is just an example of how to connect the themes for year one to year seven program. As you can see on the slide, we have the AP themes. There are six of them on the left-hand side of the slide. And for each year of study, there's about four to five themes that are being created into units. What's nice with this format is that it allows us to go through and cover the different themes at different levels so that we can actually circle back, connect new knowledge that students are getting, um, in the later years to something that they have learned in an earlier year. So that way, they can connect new knowledge to old knowledge and really create a deeper understanding and a deeper knowledge base of the culture and of the language. It also allows us to fill gaps that kids may have missed at certain points along the way. So we're kind of going back and making sure those get filled. The other piece that's a little different is we're now viewing it as year one to year seven versus just level one to level five. And the main reason for this is so that we can keep a consistency and looking at the proficiency levels so we can set our proficiency goals for each year. And that way, no matter when a student enters the program, we know where their goals are going to be. And it just makes it much easier for us to keep it consistent and to really be able to reinforce that and have similar expectations and similar goals for the students. And if you look on the top where you have the different years, you can see the proficiency goals are stated, starting with year one, ending with a proficiency goal of novice high, and going all the way to year seven where the proficiency goal is, um, advanced low. Okay? So setting the proficiency targets is basically the first piece of the Fundamental Visionary Language Program. Basically, once you've set your units, your thematic units, your proficiency goals, then what we need to do as educators is set up the instructional pathways. And what that simply means is that we would then be designing assessments, we would be designing lessons, activities, all things that students would be doing day-to-day that will enable them to meet those goals. It will also let us be able to, um, check for learning and see where kids are with their, where students are with their learning process. This also means that we're going to need to be, um, working on internal as well as external assessments. With the internal assessments, that's something that we would work on to make sure there's that consistency from year to year. With the external assessments, that is going to allow us to see if we are meet, meeting our proficiency goals each year with our students. And what we would do with external assessments is actually collect that data, analyze it, and see where we can work on to improve student learning. And improve that. So we, um, basically have the same aim to create these proficiency targets. We've started working on those. As Leslie mentioned earlier, a number of us have been to the Proficiency Academy as well as other conferences and workshops. There are a few of us who are going again this summer. And this past year, we have also worked with the World Language Consultant, Greg Duncan, to help guide us through this process. And hopefully, we'll be able to continue working with him because it's been a really great experience and very enlightening for all of us and helping us get on the same page and really work together in making all of this happen. Turn it over to Barb.
Hi, I'm Barb Milliken, and I've been in this district for a really long time, since, let's say, nineteen eighty-five. So I've seen a lot of change in the middle school. I actually started at the middle school. Steve Lord and I developed the program. I took some time off. I came back and I did fifth grade through eighth grade and then went up to the high school. So I've seen a lot of change. I think the most exciting part of all of this is what Michelle alluded to, and that is that for the very first time in, in my career, so the existence of this program, we are truly developing a six-through-twelve program where, um, we are not two satellite schools that every once in a while gets together and, and plans. We are truly eager learners, all on the same level of this. Even though some of us have been to more of the educational pieces, we are all in awe of the people that have these programs and are doing it effectively. So we're all little eager birds looking to each other. So you have really seasoned people, um, and you have young and vibrant people with new ideas that know maybe the technology better, that help us. But it's, it's just a really cool collaborative. We are a one department, happen to be in two different, um, buildings, but everything we do. So our summer program is going to be really critical. It will be great that we're going to the second level of the Summer Institute in Massachusetts, the Proficiency Academy, because the second level of it is truly how do you create all of these units? Which we've done a lot of training of, but to have a week-long, um, session with other teachers doing it, it will be great. We have a lot of work to do. The middle school especially is really breaking ground with this, so we need to help them out a lot. But for the summer, um, we will use that guide that you saw, the Dubai School, and we will use the AP themes because they're incredibly useful, wonderful themes. And we're going to take them from year one through to year seven. So the summer, we have to decide what themes are going to be taught in which level. And, um, then once we do that, that will be our first, our first bullet. We really need to dig in and develop all the thematic year, units for level one, which means French and Spanish one at the high school and year six at the middle school. They will be doing the same curriculum in two different places. Of course, the delivery will probably be different, but we will have the same themes, the same units. We will research the same authentic resources, which takes a ton of time. We've tried it. So to have all of us there will be great. The same, um, we'll talk about the formative assessments, which can be very informal to more diagnostic, but more importantly, the summative assessments. So that our kids will all be coming out of that one year, sixth grade and freshman year, with the same learning outcomes, hopefully. And you know, this is a great, you know, we're just keeping our fingers crossed that we're going to do a good job with this. It's going to take a lot of work. The middle school is going to have to continue with their developing the other, um, years over the course of, um, next year, but we'll be there to help them with it. Then the following year, we will do years two and three. Summer of two thousand nineteen will do year two, all the way up to two thousand twenty when we get to year three. So it will be really exciting. And like I said, I think it's, it's high time that we're all on one, uh, team as we are, and we're very excited about it. I don't know if you have any questions?
Barb, I have a question.
Yes.
So you just said, you know, sixth grade and ninth grade are going to have the same outcomes. Doesn't that, uh, mean that you're in transition between the proposed system and the old system?
Yeah, we're going to have to really, it's going to be a total revolution.
So when those six, when those sixth graders get to ninth grade, they're going to be at level four, where our current ninth grader is level one.
That's correct.
So the net result of this is that when we move our kids through this program, they're going to end up editing, uh, uh, much further along the continuum of proficiency in a world language than we can currently do because we've been running them as two separate programs.
Absolutely. So if I bring you back to the cone, something that, it might have hit you as weird that we said that we're going to be teaching for seven years and, and be in the intermediate zone. Because that's a really big cone. But the truth is that very few of us in English are distinguished speakers or superior speakers. The biggest, you get out of that blue cone in the bottom very quickly. It's very easy to get out of novice, well, we say that. It's easy to get out of novice low to novice mid and novice high. And our kids are learning these, these categories and what they mean, which is very cool. But the longest period of time that you are stuck in is between that novice high, intermediate low, all the way through. It is the period of time where you start playing with timeframes and you make lots of, lots of errors. Which is okay. It's totally okay. I mean, I've been working with my fours to just speak, 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 speak. It's hard for me. I was the old school. Every time they make a correction, I want to correct them. Especially the French people, like perfection, perfection, perfection. I have to totally let go of it. So much of it is like the writing process, Tom. It is really like that. The grammar's not gone, it's just used in context. So it is a whole different thing. But you're right. Once you've got seven years of that language, those kids are veering towards that advanced mid and low. Not, not advanced mid, advanced low. You really, yes.
So, again, um, because I know that we've got our Barrington students that are coming, so a ninth grade would still offer a level the, the first year, a first year. So there still would be a, two tracks, basically, that would be.
Yeah, yeah. Plus, we have a lot of kids that pick up another language, so.
Oh, okay.
That level one will never go, or year one.
Year one, yeah.
Our year one and their year one will.
Yeah.
Always be there.
Okay.
Well, you have kids going from middle school to the high, you know, kids in the middle school where a proficiency level is closer to what kids in the high school might be at. Would you be, have kids moving?
We, we have to investigate all of that. I mean, it's really, it's a, it's a, a different way of looking at things. And we're looking at other schools and other parts of the world that use this program, and we will use those, them as our mentors.
It's predictable, Barb, going on Tom's question, that you'll have some youngsters at the middle school that are working through this continuum faster than others.
Absolutely.
And, you know, as I see what you're doing, seems possible to me, just as we do with the math program, that we'll the math program, that we'll have kids who would be better suited for their instruction by going to the high school.
Right.
Because you'll max out what can happen at the middle school.
Right.
The reality of the levels and the years here is that it allows us to have massive amounts of differentiation. So, every assessment that we create, every task that we have our students complete, can be completed by any student at any level in that proficiency chart, basically. We just have to make sure that the kids are aware of what can get them to that next level, and that's where that feedback comes back and that clarity of what we're expecting our students to accomplish will come into play in making sure that they're aware of what that criteria is ahead of time.
An example of that is in my twos. I was asking them lots of questions yesterday, and their tendency is to give me a one-word answer. So, I have to refer to that and say, "I'm not looking for a novice low answer. I'm really trying to stretch you into that intermediate zone." So, then they're on their game, because our kids want to do well. So, then they push themselves to try to get that sentence out, and it's intimidating, especially in French, it's intimidating. And so, they get it, and they want to do well, and they want to strive and do their best. So, when they have that knowledge of the levels, it pushes them.
I just had one more question. Like, are there going to be opportunities for immersion? Because it seems to me, when you get into a situation where you're speaking it and listening to it all the time, that's when you make this tremendous growth, as opposed to having it one period a day or something. I mean, is that going to be like?
I don't know.
I mean, I would think like in, close to Canada, you could have, you know?
Yeah, that's true. I mean, there are possibilities, there are truly possibilities. But, you know, as we go through this, our focus is hopefully that the classes, as we get going, are just, they will be immersed. But you're right, you can't be immersed in a 50-minute or an 80-minute period and then go. True fluency doesn't occur until you live in the country for a period of time, so.
So, just one other point before you guys leave. So, we've done a lot of work in systems thinking, and, you know, probably our best example right until tonight was our math program and how we've looked at it from the elementary, the middle school, the high school. You're the first group of educators who are in different buildings, who see themselves as one team. And I just want to congratulate you on shifting your mindset from two faculties in two different buildings to one faculty serving both buildings. So, thank you for that.
Thank you. And thank you for bringing Greg Duncan. I mean, he was really the glue for all of us.
Fabulous experience. Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Okay, next, we have as a discussion item, but also as an action item, the cell phone policy.
So, just to, you know, bring you up to speed, at our last board meeting, we sent the policy, the draft that we were considering. We had a fairly lengthy conversation about it. We took comments from the board back to the policy committee. One of them was something that Michael said about the synergy between the rules and the policy. So, we felt it was important that the exceptions that are stated in the rule section show up in the policy. We brought Catherine Plord in, our special services coordinator, and revisited the exceptions. And as she said, even school policy doesn't trump IDEA. And so, that's why in the original rules, we had exceptions for IEPs, 504, and medical reasons. So, I just took Michael's thought and said, "Yeah, that probably should show up in both places so that it's clear what the exceptions are." We took out the educational exception related to faculty having the option to utilize the cell phones for an educational purpose, because the board moved forward and supported the one-to-one device. So, basically negated any need for a personal device to be used from bell to bell. And so, that's where we are tonight. I think it's relatively close to where the board's will was, based on the discussion. But of course, you didn't take a vote, so I'm still throwing the dart, so to speak, at the dartboard. And so, I just need the board to let me know if we're there, close to there, or nearly there, or way out to lunch.
So, I'm wondering if we could start with this, the motion to approve this for first read and have the discussion come within the motion. Al?
Make a motion to approve the policy J I C J first read.
A.
Oh, A.
A, yeah.
Moved by Al, sir second, second by Brian. Okay, open for discussion. I anticipated we would have some discussion on this.
So, the, and we've heard from several people, the only outstanding issue used to be the storage of the device during the day. And I didn't know if there were thoughts from the administration on that, or, in other words, should it be addressed through procedure, or?
Yeah, it definitely should be in procedure. And in truth, Dan, when I got the same emails that the board got, my intent was for them to be off bell to bell and put away in their backpacks. The question came up about putting them in lockers. Couple of things related to lockers is currently, we don't put locks on the lockers, so they wouldn't be secure. If we wanted that to be an option, then we would, I think, have to assume the responsibility for buying locks for lockers, because Jay and Bill would need to have access to those because they're school property, even if there's stuff in them. And the second piece is, I am not sure, because I failed to ask Jay this question, whether we actually have the capacity for each student to have their own locker. I don't know that there's 660 lockers there.
Yes.
So, Jay.
We do have a lock for every student. It's kind of like a rite of passage. I'll be talking with fifth grade, incoming fifth grade parents, so it's something every student does and is provided with a locker. I do want to just talk briefly about the cultural aspect. The reason why we don't have locks on the lockers is because our students make great choices. We never have theft issues. That was even a concern with previous laptop carts and things like that, that we need to lock these things up. Our kids make great choices. Some students do choose to put a lock on their locker if they want to, but I can count the amount of thefts we've had in our school community over the past several years on one hand, literally. So, again, the no-locker piece is kind of like a cultural component of who our kids are, but.
And in terms of storage, Jay, while you're here, it seems to me, in a more practical sense, it's much easier for the kids to turn them off and stick them in their backpack than it is to run back at the end of the day and grab it on the way out to a bus, because it's always a big rush at the end of the day.
Yeah, I mean, most of the kids go back to their lockers near the end of the day or after advisory, which we currently have at the end of the day, and grab their stuff. Yep.
Would you feel that if we, I mean, recognizing what you just said in terms of theft being on one hand, but if you were putting a $500 device in a locker, wouldn't you feel more comfortable if that was the case, that they were locked?
Honestly, no. I mean, our kids do that every single day, all the time. They really do.
Okay. And maybe they won't be attracted, because everyone's got one, but.
Yeah.
So, the answer to your question, Dan, is that was the intent, that they would be put away.
Sure. Could I just follow up? Just thinking of it, the new policy has certain advantages, I think, from an enforcement perspective. And one of the, I guess, concerns that I think I heard in several emails that we got was the temptation that if the device is readily available, that temptation may inevitably lead to use of the device, you know, despite the policy. So, if a teacher sees a student with a device.
Yep.
You know, from enforcement perspective, if it's known that that device needs to be stashed in a locker, for example, it's clear to that teacher that that device needs to be, that situation needs to be addressed.
Yep.
Whereas, if there's some gray area of, "Well, you know, it was in my pocket and I just took it out because it was uncomfortable, because I was walking," or, you know, that makes it a more difficult situation for a member of the teaching staff to navigate, right? So, you know, is there a need to address it one way or another? I don't know. I'm just asking the question.
Based on Jay's answer, I would say we just insert language that the unit has to be shut off, and it's either in the backpack or it's in a locker. Either way, I mean, as long as it's, if you are going to violate the rule and you have to start it up, that's a whole different timeframe than it is to take a quick look. So, turning them off is important, because start up is going to take a few seconds. And so, I think that if they're off in either location, it works.
So, then you just get into a situation potentially where teachers are checking to see if devices are truly powered off or not.
I don't think the teachers need to do that at all.
You know, and all I'm saying is, I'm just reflecting on the many concerns and stories I've heard over this past year.
Sure. Yeah, I don't think that, the teachers don't have to do anything other than if they see a child with the device out, they either take it, or they send them to Jay. I don't think that, the teachers don't have to do any inspection of backpacks or any of that kind of stuff. The expectation is when they get off the bus, they've shut it off and they put it away.
Okay.
I'd say the same thing. I mean, to me, it's, the minute you see a cell phone out, you've already, it's already sparked a red flag. Why would you have the cell phone out? There's really no reason to have it out. So, I think from a comfort level, I would like to give you guys some, you know, I know for some kids putting the, especially if you don't have a lock and they're going to put it in their locker, there's going to be this worry that they're going to have that there's $500 thing is going to get stolen. So, I think in terms of giving you guys a little bit of flexibility, because you're implementing this, whether it's in the backpack or the locker, I think you're going to work that out. But again, right now, the way it's set up, since you have a device, that's a managed device, and there's really no reason to have a cell phone out, period, from bell to bell, that's pretty clear. So, I think anytime you see the cell phone out, again, it would trigger a reaction, not like powered off, but be like, "You violated the policy," so.
Now, we do that now. I mean, this isn't going to be a significant change. If we see a kid out, you know, in the hallway during academic time right now, and they have the device out, we'll confiscate it.
So, I think that that was our intent, and we can put that in the rules, that this powered off and put away.
Do you carry their backpacks to class?
Carry them everywhere.
It's really based on student choice. We have, most students don't. You know, some schools ban backpacks from, you know, kids carrying them around during the day, but we have certain students who like to carry all this stuff, and as long as it doesn't have a negative impact on everyone else's learning, we allow it.
So, if I don't carry my backpack, I have no choice but to leave my phone in the locker?
In the locker.
Yep.
So, it's either one or the other.
I just wondered, as a comfort level, to have some, at least, option that you might promote maybe more vigorously than you do now, that if parents want to, you know, whether we have to provide the lock or whether the parents could buy a lock, that it's a school.
I mean, you think I would talk about that more to my parents in terms of encouraging, you know, if you want to make sure whatever items you're sending your child with, this is care, to provide your child with a lock. I encourage that more. Right now, again, we haven't encouraged that, again, because I've been proud of the, you know, the cultural aspect of that with our students. You know, when new families come into our school and I show them around the school, they'll be like, "Why aren't there any locks on the lockers?" That's a reflection of our students in our school community. Our kids make really, really good choice. That's something I've been very proud of. When I go to visit other middle schools and I see locks all over the place, I think it's almost a reflection of potentially, maybe their school community. I mean, if you go to buy lost and found, not to plug Service Palooza again, Pfizer did a wonderful job organizing the lost and found. There's all vineyard vines, jackets, North Face jackets, all these like super, super expensive things in the lost and found. It's like amazing. But again, I think I'm proud of that. It's a reflection of our school community that, you know, if there's a North Face jacket, you know, laying in the gym, someone returns it to lost and found, they don't snatch it. And the community I live with, live in, you know, I've had my kids' stuff stolen. That's not who we are as a school.
Can I just make one suggestion? One of the things that we need to think about when we issue locks is when you have like an emergency drill or an evacuation, you'd need to be able to have access to all those lockers, because potentially, if there's, you know, God forbid, a bomb threat or something like that. So, it might actually be worth, look, if we want to provide locks, we look at getting them ourselves, and not everybody has to have one, but they need to be our locks so we can access them.
Yeah, I think you'd have to.
Yeah, they'd have to be that way. So, having parents buy their own locks probably wouldn't be a good idea.
But buy the lock from you, and you would have the, you would have the combination.
Pretty much, that's what we do with our PE department. They get a bunch of locks and they're issued, and kids don't have to take one if they don't want it, but that's how we control for that.
I just, real quick, too, I mean, we do have surveillance, you know, surveillance videos in all the hallways and lockers. So, on the rare occasion where a kid has said, "Oh, my device got stolen," you know, we go on the surveillance and the kid misplaced the device, literally, left it someplace else or something like that. So, that's another aspect. But if you do want to go the locker route and buy every kid a locker and do that, the challenge with that with middle school kids, I mean, the amount of parents streaming in that forget their instruments, forget things, or they forget their, you know, locker combinations and things like that. Dr. Morse knows, he's worked in middle schools. So, again, if kids want to do a lock or families want to do that, I'll highly encourage them to do that. We could provide them and say, "If you really want, here's a lock, you can do that." But again, it hasn't been an issue over the years.
You know, it doesn't mean whatever we come up with, that we can't change it down the road. I would just like to go with what we have, try it out, see how it works. You know, if we have issues, we can modify it, you know? I want to, I am agreeing with Al that we want to, I think we should give the school, you know, some flexibility to be able to implement this. And I think we've come a very long way in terms of restricting it. So, let's try it out, see how it goes. If there's still issues, then we can go down the road before, you know, giving every kid a lock and doing all these, to me, like complicated things that may not even be necessary. That's my feeling about it.
Okay.
One thing, it's not just middle schools who'll forget their combinations when they go to the field. I'm a little embarrassed.
You too, huh?
But with all respect to you, Denise, I would suggest adding to our policy, phones brought to school must be kept either in a backpack or a locker during the school day. And it's as simple as pie to do that, and how the school decides to do lockers or whatnot that's on their own. But I think it gives complete clarity to what we're intending to do. It takes the teacher out of that position of seeing a phone, deciding whether it's on or off, kids sneaking looks in the hallway. It just, to me, it just makes it, to me, it's the natural outgrowth for what we're trying to achieve here. And going less than that, it's just leaving, you know, we talked about it in another meeting, leaving doors open. So, that's my feeling.
So, Kenny, just clarification question. Are you talking about changing the policy or having it inserted in the procedures?
I think it's part of the policy, because in the policy, we're stipulating what should happen, and I think that's what happens. The R is more the enforcement of it. That's just me.
I don't have any opinion of where it should be, frankly, but I think the clarity, to me, is appealing, that it just, it makes things clearer. It feels like a lot less work for the staff and the administration to explain how it works and what has changed. And, you know, I think it'll be easier to adapt to.
Thanks for that, Dan. You just reminded me of something I wanted to say tonight, the adapt piece. You know, I've had great conversations with the parents and the board related to this issue. One of the things I just want to be super clear on is, this is, even though we don't have a built-in transition period in this, and I totally understand and agree with that, it doesn't mean there isn't going to be resistance. So, the incoming fifth graders, current fourth graders, this policy's not going to raise an eyebrow. The outgoing eighth grader is, the current eighth grader, they're going off to high school, this policy's not going to raise an eyebrow. The place where we can expect resistance from parents is in sixth and seventh grade, our current, our next year's seventh and eighth graders, because they've lived under the previous procedures, policies and procedures. So, when you make a sea change like this, there will be difficulty.
procedures. So when you make a sea change like this, there will be difficulty. I don't want people to think just because, you know, we created a policy and we have procedures that everybody's going to go into the sunset saying, well, we disagree with them, but we'll agree. I would tell you that already, even before you finalize this, I had a pretty heated conversation, I won't call it an argument, with a parent this week. And one of our administrators got an email from a parent that said, you will not take my child's cellphone away. I just simply said to the administrator, let the parent know, we are obligated to enforce school board policy, not their will. And so, you know, it'll be a rocky couple of years. But once those two grades work their way through the middle school, you know, this will be the way things are. Just in case, the reason I'm putting it out there is, you know, it's possible somebody will, you know, write to you, call you, what have you. But we are sort of like the world language. We're making a sea change here and there will be people who will be upset. And there will be people who will want to defy, just like that parent who sent it to the administrator an email. And our response is, we're obligated to enforce school board policy. Doesn't make them happier. It just lets them know that, no, we can't do what you want. We have to do what the board wants us to do. So I put that out there, just forewarned is forearmed. It's not necessarily going to be smooth two years. I think first year will be harder than the second year, and then I think it goes away.
I think to go to the survey of just how much parent-student communication there is, it might, you know, but based on my reading of that survey, there's probably at least 300 kids that are contacted every day during the school day. And so I think this is, for these, these parents, this is a big change. And I think that, I think it's going to have to be carefully explained. I think we need to say that we have looked at, you know, certainly Portsmouth, the cooperative school at Stratum, the Amherst Middle School, all of whom have the policy that we have. So we've, you know, there are schools that have made it work. But I think it's going to be parents who are used to contacting their kid during the day to remind them, to encourage them, to whatever. It's going to, it's going to be a change for them. And I think that there's a, maybe a style of parenting that this is going to be pushing against. So I think you're right. And I think it's, and I think that they just, you're going to have to, it's going to be pressure, I think, probably in the main office for a while to deal with that. But historically, that's the way it's been done.
Yeah. I mean, I think, I just wanted to make sure that if you guys got contact, you would know that Jay and I would be living to the letter of the policy. This policy, once it's passed, becomes basically the law or voice to river, and we will enforce it.
I have somewhat unrelated question slash comment. I was at the middle school this morning. Not there very often. I didn't hear any bells. I don't know if there are bells or not. Policy says first bell to, first bell to last bell. If there's not bells, maybe we can come up with some better language for that part of the policy.
You didn't, when you came in, we do have a bell. We have a bell at 8:05 that signifies that students are allowed to go to classrooms. The official start of the school day is 8:15, a bell goes off. And a bell also goes off at 3:05 to conclude the day. You just missed them.
I missed them.
Missed it by that much.
I heard the 8:05 bell the other day. I was in there early.
Could I get a sense of the board, like Kenny mentioned, to have the specific language of the cellphone should be in the backpack or locker? How do people feel about that? No?
I just think we're, we got to let it, I think we got to try it out and just see how it works. Now, I think we're micromanaging it too much. I mean, I have enough faith in our teachers that if it becomes an issue, they'll deal with it. And I feel if it gets even more, Jay's going to deal with it. And I have, I have faith in them in that. I don't think we really have to tell everybody exactly where to put their cellphone. If it comes out, there's pretty clear consequences on what comes, what happens.
So if they want to come to us and ask for, you know, something firmer down the road, they could do that.
Yes, we have that ability.
So even if you don't want it in the policy to be truthful, I would want it in the regulations because it's much easier for Jay and I if we're enforcing something that's crystal clear. So if it's not going to be in the policy, which I'm okay with, I would put it in, in the regulations.
In our document?
Yeah. Exactly. That's what I'm saying. I would do it anyway in the regulations because I don't, I think the, the issue of temptation is super great with teenagers, you know, as much as Jay loves his middle school kids and they're making great decisions. There are always, you know, youngsters who would want to put it in their pocket and, you know, it's off, it's off, I'm telling you, it's off. And then there's the big debate about whether it was off. And I think it's much easier if they keep it in their backpack or in their locker. So I would put that language in the regulations, even if it's not in the policy. It's just easier for Jay and I to.
So that would be your call to do that?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Is that like an executive order?
I'm just, I'm just saying that if you don't put it there, I'm going to put it here.
So we have a motion in a second to approve this for first read, or further discussion on this? No? Okay, all those in favor of approving this policy, first read, raise your hand. Seven in favor, the student rep in favor, that policy's approved.
Thank you. Long time coming.
Yeah. So I think we can go through the rest of the stuff fairly quickly.
Yeah.
Famous last words, right? So rather than take a break, are we okay to, go ahead?
Yeah.
Okay. So I thought we'd go through the rest of the policies and then go back to the master schedule. Does that make sense, since you're talking about policy?
Sure.
Okay. Let's see, I just got to get, give me a second. Okay, so we have the, we're also for first read, the parent objections to specific course material. I don't know if we want to approve these as a, as a block or whether people want to separate these out. Denise?
I'm going to present it as, as a block because it's just.
Could you pull out the last one because I think the wording needs improvement on the last one.
Okay.
All right. So then I think what I'm going for then is parental objection to specific course material, IHAM, and the health, education, and exemption from instruction. Oh, no, that's, I'm sorry. IGE is the parental objection to specific course material. IHAM is health, education, and exemption from instruction.
So you're approving this?
Motion to approve those for first read.
Okay, moved by Denise, is her second. Second by Al. Is there discussion on these?
Just wondered if somebody on the policy committee or Jim could briefly speak to the legal framework behind these changes. I assume there's some external influence.
Yeah, so our template for school board policies is normally the New Hampshire School Boards Association. And in two of these, they, they updated their policies simply by adding a pair, two paragraphs in each of them. And so the rest of the language is what we're used to. And then in both of those policies, they've inserted two paragraphs. They didn't change them substantively, but needed to be updated.
You could see that when you look at policies, when you look under the headings, some say recommended and some say required. And when they're required, language is kind of dictated often in context. So these were required and those changes came up.
And then the one on the flag, Michael, was really just a revisit of that policy in terms of, it was sort of an antiquated language. And the policy committee felt it was important to bring that language into, you know, kind of current thinking.
Okay, so we have a motion in a second on, sorry, policies IGE and IHAM, right? So are we to vote on those for first read? All those in favor, approve those for first read, raise your hands. Seven in favor, the student rep in favor, those are approved for first read. So we have IMDA.
So I make a motion to approve IMDA, recognition of our national heritage patriotic exercises for first read.
Moved by Denise, second by Brian. Kenny, you got a change?
Some changes. So everybody have it that was in their pocket?
It is a correction when they add the flag.
Yeah, the flag, not the United States, yes.
Could I read the proposed changes I got today?
Sure.
So first sentence, I don't think flag should be capitalized. Second sentence, it should be the flag, not pluralized. Then jumping down to the first big paragraph there, I would reword it because I don't think the wording really is totally reflective.
You're talking about the one that says the flag is that paragraph?
The one after, yeah, that one. I would start it with, although the flag is a part of our national heritage, comma, no student or staff member, and then I would keep the rest of that paragraph the same.
Okay. So you're removing the word that?
Yep.
And I'm going to say, yeah, okay, and removing that also and put a comma and say no. And then the last paragraph, just to try to make the wording right, the significance of the flag, comma, other patriotic exercises and documents of national or historic importance shall be used as teaching tools so that the students of each generation might better understand how our form of democracy has developed.
That's got a lot of, I didn't catch a lot of those changes.
Can you do that last paragraph again, Ken?
Yeah.
The significance of the flag, comma, other patriotic exercises and documents of national or historic importance shall be used as teaching tools so that the students of each generation might better understand how our form of democracy has developed.
Instead of grown, okay.
That's better.
Yeah, that's, that's nice.
Okay.
So has everybody got those changes?
It's just the first.
So I don't know who.
So Ken, do you need to make a motion to amend the policy?
Whom did you mention a motion?
I made, I made the original.
Denise and Brian.
We accept that as a family amendment?
Yes, that's fine. I have, that's fine.
Okay. So we can vote on Ken's, Ken's version of it then. Is that okay?
Yep.
Okay. So ready to vote on this for first read? All those in favor of the version that Ken put forward, raise your hand. Seven in favor, student rep in favor, those approved.
I would think we would salute on that.
Yeah. Committee updates?
Calendar.
I'm sorry, calendar, yeah, sorry. We have a motion to approve the 2018, 2019 school board calendar. Brian?
Motion to approve the 1819 school calendar.
Moved by Brian, is her second?
I'll second.
Second by Denise. Okay. Discussion on it? So we have the two, two meetings back-to-back in November, which gets us off the Thanksgiving week, which I think is better. Are we okay? Ready to vote? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Seven in favor, student rep in favor. Do we have, do we have a motion to approve that?
Yep.
Okay, good, good. Gets late, gets, gets late at night, I forget, I forget these things. Okay. Now we're at the school committee updates. The facilities committee for the middle school had its final meeting. They've designated a drafting committee, which Dan, myself, and Art Quadano are on. We're going to draft a report circulated among members and have that ready for the, we have the second meeting in June, is that correct?
Yep.
Okay, so we will have the report of that committee on the second meeting of June. Okay, Denise?
For policy committee, in your packet, I believe, should be the OR CSD racism policy addendum. Did that make it into, that did not make it into?
It did not make it in, no.
Okay, so we'll wait and address that next, next time then.
Okay. Al?
The, I don't know what I called them, the technology committee met the first time I've met with it. And it was, it's really a large committee. And I think one of the concerns, I think, when we implemented one-on-one technology and actually when you implement any technology is, do you have a robust enough support staff behind it to really integrate it? And I think it's pretty clear that you do on this committee. I think what struck me is, is we've improved all those technology integrators over time, how robust a setup we really had. So that was promising. The discussion really kind of centered around professional development, bringing people really up to speed with technology. And it's, there's a really kind of a large range, I think, that we see. There's some people that are incredibly proficient and there are some that are not. But I think that it was really good that there's, the people that are very proficient were kind of aware what they needed and were all thinking about what development would be offered and really have a robust setup for the rest of the staff. So that was good. And I think a lot of the discussion also is like, how are we actually getting all of this technology in and entering into it? So I think that discussion kind of, thinking about how we would implement it would go in. So it was kind of a comforting meeting, I think. And the next one is, is June 13th, I think it is. So we'll continue with that discussion.
The only thing I would add, so that the board knows, is that this committee and the, and the instructional technologists are developing professional workshops for the Monday and Tuesday following the last day of school on the 22nd, as one of the options for staff to choose in terms of fulfilling their contractual obligations. And there'll be sessions for, designed for elementary people, middle school people, and high school people. And there'll be, the session is designed for K through 12 people. So this, this group of individuals, as Al's referred to on the technology committee, are so charged to really begin this work in earnest. So we've really got an incredibly talented group of people.
And they were just really collaborative. I mean, Jim was talking about like in terms of with the foreign language, working across buildings. It really was working across all levels. It wasn't like, I'm in the high school, I only want to do like high school stuff. They weren't at all. They were trying to think about what is the best professional development that targets to the staff. So it's really a good group.
Good. It's encouraging because it's going to be a real challenge.
It's going to be fast and furious, yes.
It's not lost on them.
And I think it connects to the, the foreign language because, I mean, having access to one-on-one technology for them, I think it's going to make a big difference, given all the connections they can make.
So in addition, we, we hope to have the lease agreement for the technology in front of the board at the next meeting because we need to get that done so we can order the machines.
Okay. Other committee updates? None? Public comment? Public is gone.
When's the last time we didn't have it at the beginning or the end? I saw Keith here. He must have disappeared.
Okay.
Next issue.
Future meetings. Homework workshop will be next Wednesday, okay, finally, weather, weather permitting. Manifest meeting then on the 30th, and then the next regular meeting will be on June 6th. So there'll be no non-public sessions. So I think we're ready to adjourn. Have a motion to adjourn. Al?
Motion to adjourn.
Second? Al, all those in favor, appreciate your hands. Okay.